I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, moment of silence, at 6:35, we have a public hearing for Nikol May Inc. doing business as Enrico for transfer of stock to managers in change of pledge interest, reports, we have the town administrators, action items, request of Steve Zoto, Walka Pond area, consideration and possible action on seasonal population for A B C C, consideration and possible action for real property valuation services, consideration and possible action on personal property valuation services, sorry, consideration and possible action on revised job description for deputy fire chief, consideration and possible action on a U N T visa policy for the Sturbridge Police Department, consideration and possible action on the special election ballot question for the renovations to the Sturbridge Senior Center, consideration and possible action on engineering services for the fire alarm for the nursery school, old business, we have COVID update, new business discussion, and vote on interim town administrator, also town administrator's search committee, we need to elect a board of selectmen rep and also a department head rep, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, then we will adjourn. Okay, public service announcements, Ian, do you have anything?
I have none.
Chase?
Just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Mary?
Me too, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Hanukkah's already taking place, Happy Hanukkah and God's blessings.
Okay, thank you, likewise, Happy Holidays to everyone. The town clerk would like me to mention tonight and also for our next several meetings that the election on the ballot question for the senior center will be held January 24th here in the town hall, seven to eight. It's a change and people probably won't be aware of it. Jamie, any?
Just one point, Pauline Supranot passed away, I think, today, I saw on social media, Michael.
Oh, did she, Mike's mother?
Yeah, Michael's mother, so I just wanted to pay respects to his family, very sad.
Okay, thank you for that.
You know what, Mary, I have one more, too.
Chase?
The jingle mingle at the senior center is canceled, I believe it was the 23rd, out of COVID safety for our seniors, so that was canceled.
They are doing a box thing, no takeout.
Okay.
From what Leslie Wong told me.
Okay, could we please have a moment of silence for those affected by COVID? Okay, thank you, okay, it's 6:35, it's close enough by the time you read the announcement.
Town of Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, public hearing, notification is hereby given that applications have been filed by Nikol May Inc., D B A Enricos for change of officers, directors, LLC manager, change of license manager, change of stock interest, and change of pledge of license, stock and inventory for the premises located at 500 Main Street Sturbridge with the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen in accordance with M G L C H 138. A public hearing will be held on Monday, December 20th, 2021, at 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor, Veterans Memorial Hall located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566.
Okay, thank you, could we have representatives come up, please?
Sure.
Okay, and could you introduce yourselves?
Sure, I'm Attorney Jim Donovan, I'm representing the applicant.
I'm Christopher Brunel.
I'm Nicole Isia.
Okay, would you explain what it is you want to do, please?
Sure, so the current principal and owner of Nikol May is Elizabeth Alisea, who was in the audience tonight, and she is transferring her ownership interest in the corporation to Mr. Brunel, and so he will become the sole stockholder of Nikol May Inc. They will continue to operate as they have operated for a number of years. Along with him becoming the sole stockholder, he'll also become an officer and director of Nikol May, so that requires action by the board, and there is a pledge of license to secure a promissory note to Elizabeth Alisea, and then finally Nicole Alisea, who has worked at the Enricos for a number of years, is becoming the manager of, you know, the onsite manager for Nikol May and at D B A Enricos.
Okay, questions? Do you have any?
Just out of curiosity, is the menu going to change, or will any, like, customers know that they've changed, because she's done such a good job, I was just curious.
There will be no less pepperonis on the pizza.
Okay, now is the new manager, I assume you're tips certified?
Yes, I have been for eight years.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Brunel, do you have anything to say?
I'd like to rewrite, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays to everybody, and thank you for having us, and look forward to joining the Sturbridge community.
Okay, thank you, okay, Mary, no, I just, okay, it is a public hearing, does anyone in the public have a comment or question? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, now we need to, Jeff, is this one svelte vote or two different votes?
I think you can take it in one vote and include both in the motion.
Okay, is someone willing to make the motion?
Yes, I'm willing to make the motion, just got to get organized about what that motion is. I move to transfer, you can approve it. Okay, yeah, I move to approve the change of officers, directors, change of stock interests, pledge of license, and change of manager.
For?
For Nikol May Incorporated, doing businesses in Enricos.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, I didn't ask about the green cards, but we have copies, so they were all returned.
You think you have one abstention?
Yeah, just for her benefit.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
401. Okay, you all set?
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Nice Christmas. Now, you close next week?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for assistance in the construction of a sound barrier, Steve Zoto, would you like to come up, please?
Did you want to do my report, or no? We can wait, we'll wait.
Oh.
We'll wait.
I always.
He'll be here, he'll be here.
Let him get it, let Steve get out of the way.
Let Steve get it.
And it's big print.
Yeah, it's cold out, he doesn't want to stay out longer than he wants to.
Okay, Steve, go ahead, please, I know we've got a little.
If I can remind people, I have a hearing disability, so if you could slow down on your conversation and, you know, I'll try to answer whatever I can hear, all right. My name again is Steve Zoto, I live at Walka Pond, and based on the last meeting in which I came, unfortunately, Mary, you weren't here at the time, but we're fighting with the state of transportation, Department of Public Works and the Department of Transportation regard to getting a noise barrier, or some form of noise protection, and with the support of Todd Smola, I said, representative, plus Linda Kokolas, we have everybody on board, and what I'm looking from the selectmen is full agreement and support to help us arrange a meeting with the state, with the Department of Transportation, to see what they can do, showing, again, the support between Walka Pond Association, the town of Sturbridge, and the petitions that I had set forward.
Okay, comments from the board?
It seems very logical to me, Steve.
Thank you.
The, yeah, so I.
Okay, anyone else have comments?
You were seeking sound barriers, and then you were looking for signage to maybe stop the jake break action going on?
The way Todd Smola said, he would try to take one step at a time, because a lot of these studies were taken in 1988 and 1992, and then pre-removal of the tollhouse, and once, they never actually went up towards where the ramps were, because they didn't realize that the traffic and the speed of the traffic would increase substantially, and which, of course, causes the jake breaks with the trucks, and there's a lot of noise coming down through there, so, he says, let's take one step at a time, we try to get signs that prohibit the jake breaks going down through that area, and then, from what I understand, there's a possibility with some federal money that's coming through, that we might be able to get noise barriers, and hopefully we can get sewer, again, established in at Walka Pond and plus water, because I also have a problem with the water conditions that they created, so, each, right now, it's phase one, is the noise barriers, and then hopefully we can progress to the other two.
Thanks, Steve.
Do you have a question?
No, I'm all for it.
Yeah, no, I would want us to say that I wholeheartedly support it as well, but are you saying the last studies were done in 1991?
19, no, 1999, no.
99.
Yes, 1988 and 1992.
Oh, 92.
Okay, and then they did a pre-construction of the removal, but just with the tollhouses where, and they never came anyplace up further to see what kind of traffic problems we create.
So, I mean, even the most recent was done 29 years ago?
Yes, for the Walka Pond ramps, but they had one also at 215, 2015, to see what kind of reaction, but of course, that was far removed from where the Walka Pond and Woodline Drive is.
And the sheer volume that is increasing.
Yes, and the speed.
Even barring the removal of the tolls, I mean, I think you have a very strong position.
Well, I have the majority of the people that live at Walka Pond for all three items, so we're hoping that we could do something, and as I explained, you know, Walka Pond is very unique, in the sense that we are north of the turnpike, and all the facilities that Sturbridge has to get off of their other residents are always on the south side of the turnpike, which makes it available a lot easier than what it is, they have to cross the park to get it to us, so it's a little bit more expensive, but it, we feel that Walka Pond are being denied, so we're hoping we can get something.
Okay, Steve, I'll be asking for motion, but I know you would like a meeting with you representing Walka Pond, and the DOT, and Todd, and everything.
Right.
I would expect we'd like that also, however, we'd probably have to wait till after the first of the year.
Right.
Is there?
Well, I plan on making arrangements, because he's well aware of what I'm doing here with Todd, and he would have to get in contact with the people from the Department of Transportation, so it would be a thing of coordinating everything between the selectmen, Linda Kokolas, myself, and himself, and plus the department, so I would try to keep you people abreast of what's going on with emails that I get, and I could forward, or give you a call, Mary, whatever they may work out.
Because I think our schedule is probably more flexible than Todd Smola's and the DOT's, so, you know, if you straighten it out with them and then bring it to us.
Yeah.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then for the support of the request?
So, I guess it's on the agenda, is the request for the sound barriers?
Yes, yeah, just step one.
Step one.
Oh, are you making it?
No, no, you go.
I'll make a motion that we support the Walka Pond Association as presented by Steve Zoto to their desire to obtain noise barriers from the state and from the Mass DOT.
Right.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you people also, thank you very much.
Jeff?
Let it roll, we'll get mine at the end.
Oh, sure, now that I missed them, no, that's okay, we're on a roll here.
This is the last one, so it's fitting, save it to the end, right?
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on seasonal population for the A B C C. We do this every year, I know we plugged in 15,000, is that what we did last year?
It's fluctuated, we, you know, there's really no good way to estimate it, so we add a third.
Yeah, we've usually gone up to 20,000, I think.
We can put whatever you want in there.
Sure, I mean, they're not gonna.
You want, well, that's a motion of the board.
Yeah, we do get a, quite an influx, especially with the new, what is it, pond, the one down on River Road?
Oh, you mean the new, the RV park?
Yeah, the RV.
Yeah, the RV park, that probably adds several.
Quite a bit, so 20,000, that's good, does somebody want to make that motion?
Make the motion to determine the seasonal. To do the seasonal population total for A B C C at 20,000.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay, next we have a consideration and possible action on personal property valuation services. Jeff, you want to address this?
Sure, the board of assessors has three-year contracts with the appraisal services, they do personal property and real property companies to assist the assessor in valuations from year-to-year, adjustments on commercial properties, so forth and so on, so they rebid the three-year contract, and this is the result. We do put money away each year to pay these costs, so there are funds available to pay the first few years, there's a non-appropriation clause in each of the contracts in the event that the board or the town meeting doesn't put the money in the account to pay the bills, and the contract is void, so, and we've used both of these companies before.
Questions for the board? I just had a question on the numbers, Jeff. It says, you know, if, over the next three years, the value of the contract is $8,520, the first two years of the contract, I look at limited accounts at a cost of $11,660, and the third year is revaluation year, and the cost is $35,000. Yet that beginning sentence says the value of the contract is $8,520.
Oh, it should be first year, or, I'm sorry, it should be, sorry, that's a typo, it's in the contract, hold on, sorry.
Well, that's okay.
It's $58,520, there's a five missing in that number.
Which one?
The one on the, in the first paragraph, first, or second sentence in the first paragraph.
Yeah, value of the contract is 58,000.
It should be 58,520.
Right, because if you add the two years, you get 23,520, and then the 45.
Okay.
That felt good, you spent 50,000. Anyone else have a question, comment? Somebody want to make a motion then, to approve the contract for the personal property valuation services?
So are we approving the values in the opening paragraph in the memorandum, I'm seeing 28,700, and then adjusted 26 and 23,5?
No, just the 28,700.
Okay.
That's the full.
That's what we're approving, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
For that one.
Just making sure, yeah, so I'll make the motion to approve the contract as written.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, next we have the consideration and possible action on real property valuation services.
Again, that number is 58,520, over three years.
No, real estate is the 28,700, we just straightened out the.
Well, it's the name of the company, the company says real estate, but it's really, they do personal property.
Yep, we just did personal property.
No, hold on.
No, that's what I said, that's why I asked, because your numbers didn't match what I was reading, so I didn't see real estate valuation services.
8,520.
The first one was real property.
Which is higher, correct?
No.
It says C, real property, real estate, 28, and then it goes to, that's why I was confused.
That one with, the one we just did is the 28,700, and this next one is the 58,200, personal property, which is higher.
Yes, but we just went through personal, maybe I had them out of order, because that's when I questioned, the numbers didn't add up.
Yeah, you had them backwards.
Right.
Or the, you had E instead of E, or C.
The title.
I was missing on that, so.
It was.
Yeah, so we straightened that one out already.
Right, so it's 58,520.
Yes, so now we're looking at real estate valuation services, and those numbers all were.
No, you're looking at.
Personal property.
Oh, wait a minute.
Both memos say real estate, and they both say item C, real estate valuation.
Well, this, yeah, okay, that's fine, ones for 58,520, the others for 28.
700.
700, so.
Okay, any question on the real estate valuation services? Someone want to make a motion and approve the contract?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract as written.
Okay, for 28,700 total cost, okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, consideration and possible action on the revised job description for deputy fire chief, Jeff, did you want to address that?
This is the same description you saw or walked in last meeting, the personnel committee has approved it without any changes from the last meeting, so we recommend you adopt the revised job description.
Okay, is there any questions? Okay, someone want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move to approve the job description as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, consideration and possible action on a U N T visa policy for the Sturbridge Police Department, chief, would you like to come down? Okay, good evening.
Good evening. So, this policy, just to sum it up, it's a pretty lengthy policy, it came out through Mass General Law, July of 2021, and basically what it does, the easiest way to explain it is, it allows for illegal immigrants to come forward and report a crime, and actually encourages them to come forward without potentially facing the consequences of being deported or facing federal charges when they come forward, in addition to that, allows victims of crimes such as sex trafficking and other crimes that meet certain criteria for them to come and not have to worry about the same thing, and if they do come forward and cooperate with the police during criminal activities, the police department certifies with the federal authorities that they're helping, they're working with us, and then that gives them a chance to apply for a permanent visa. So basically, I took Mass General Law, turned it into our policy because the law says police departments and courts have to make a policy regarding this, that's where this extends from.
Okay, questions? Comments?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Okay, someone want to make a motion then?
Yes, I will move to adopt the policy as written.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
The next discussion and possible action on the special election ballot question for the renovations to the senior center. Jeff, I had a question on this, we always have a money amount.
I asked specifically town council that, and it wasn't to be included in the ballot question.
Because I'm not sure town moderator will agree with that, because he's usually the one that brings that issue up.
Neither, both bond council and town council wrote the same motion without the amount in it.
Okay, but I also think that it's nice if the people know what they're voting on, and before the actual election, I think the board of selectmen has to get information together on what it's going to cost people as far as their tax bill goes, because those questions always come up.
And we have that.
Okay, we just have to get it out to people, we can even go through it at our next.
Sure, we had it ready for the.
Can you put it on the agenda for that?
We had that for town meeting as well, so, I mean, it's up to the board if you want to include an amount, I certainly understand, it was surprising to me that the amount was not in the question.
I agree with Mary wholeheartedly, I mean, it's legal this way, but that doesn't mean it's as transparent as it could be this way.
I think to the benefit of the seniors, that people are going to look at this as a blank check and possibly vote against it, and that it's going to go in brad for them.
Yeah, and people just, I agree, and people just want to know what it's costing. I mean, and I agree, Ian, it can backfire, we don't know what this is costing, forget it.
Right, exactly.
So.
Can we have an amount with the posting time limit and still make it?
Hold on, let me read, let me see if I can find Jonathan's question. Ballot question. Does the whole amount, sounds like a lot. Does this question need to include the amount of the bond issue? And his answer was, per the statute and state guidance, no. So, we can, if you want to include, if you want to include that, we can retype it tonight and get it here, so you can sign it tonight?
Well, I think people want to know, also.
Mary, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Oh, no, no, I know, Jeff, but.
I'm just giving you what the town council gave me.
I think that's the route.
I was surprised that the amount wasn't in the question.
Right, and I do know there'll be a hurdle with the town moderator, because he's pulled articles before when there's no money mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, would you like a motion then, for us to vote?
Not for it, with the amount put in.
And Michelle can.
Yeah, what's the amount again, it was 11?
Eleven and a half million dollars.
So can we approve the warrant with, just say, cost to be included?
With the cost to be included.
Vote on it tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion to approve the warrant article to include the cost of 11.5 million dollars.
Is there a second?
I will second it, assuming everything else remains as written.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Also, we'll need a motion to post the warrant in the, I believe it's seven places where it gets posted.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? I appreciate it.
We will have that, if you can stick around for a few minutes after the meeting, we'll get that redone.
Okay.
So you can sign it.
Okay, consideration and possible. Okay, consideration and possible action on engineering services for the fire alarm system for the nursery school. Robin?
Just come over to the office.
Good evening.
So one of the capital projects on my to-do list is to replace the fire alarm at 518 Main Street, the Cooperative Nursery School building. It's a, it's still a town-owned building, we are essentially the landlord since the nineteen-sixties for the Cooperative Nursery School. I've been having difficulty reaching out to engineering firms, everybody's very, very busy, but Van Zelm is willing to give us a performance specification. This is more work for the contractor later, so it's light on the design side, it'll be heavier on the construction side later, when we can go out to bid. So I'm recommending that we contract with Van Zelm engineers for the fire alarm design.
Okay, questions, comments from the board?
How much is, uh, the, will the fire alarm system cost to actually build it?
Part of the design services will include a cost estimate, so we'll make sure that we have enough remaining in the, in the estimate.
So we're just approving sixty-five hundred for engineering out of twenty-five thousand, six fifty that's available, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the, uh, the contract as drafted.
Okay, hmm, you should put the...
Oh, with, uh...
Money.
With sixty-five hundred dollars for engineering and design, the new fire alarm at the nursery school.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Robin.
Have a nice Christmas. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah. COVID? Um, a couple things on COVID. Let me get to that piece of packet here. You have some changes on the senior center, some were mentioned this evening. The exercise sessions will be limited to twenty participants, the cornhole tournament in Charleston is postponed, and then you have the details on the departmental and community survey results for the use of the ARPA funds. I think some of those suggestions are very good and is appropriate for the use of the money, others are probably not applicable to the legal uses of the money. So, um, probably the, what I would recommend to do is somehow form a subcommittee that consists of a Board of Select member, department head, um, to kind of go through this and see what you want to focus on for the remaining funds.
That's reasonable, because there are a lot of suggestions. Would, uh, Selectmen be willing to be on the subcommittee?
I'll volunteer if it pay occur at night, I can't do it during the day.
It'll be whenever you want.
I mean, I don't know how the department head feels about that, you know, it's a little bit, but we can't.
Maybe we could, we could rotate around too, and some of us could go, we could go when you're available, or...
That's a good idea too, rotation.
Yeah.
Right, so why don't we nominate Mary first, and see how we, uh...
So what are we going to call that committee?
ARPA Subcommittee?
ARPA Subcommittee, okay.
ARPA Subcommittee, consisting of...
In fact, we'll have to get a volunteer, department head.
And I would include the interim town administrator on that committee as well.
Okay, so can somebody make that motion?
Yes, I will move to appoint Mary Dowling to the head of the newly formed ARPA Subcommittee for the purposes of evaluating how to spend the remaining ARPA funds, and that Subcommittee will also include the interim town manager, whoever that, excuse me, interim town administrator, whoever that is, and a department head who volunteers.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
If I may back up for a second, I just got, Barbara's been texting me, she's asking that you approve the ballot question both ways, and we'll work it out with the attorney. This is a ballot question, not a warrant, the moderator has no say in it. I under, we understand the desire to publicize the amount, but we have to make sure it's a valid ballot question, so if you can approve it both ways, and we'll figure it out with the attorneys in the morning.
When, when does it need to be approved for the warrant?
Well, it's a, it's not a warrant, it's a ballot. Today.
So it needs to be approved today.
Today.
So I don't know that I feel comfortable approving something two ways, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I won't either, because basically that's saying that we're okay with it moving forward as drafted. When the attorney, uh, mind you, when the attorney say it's permissible not to put it in...
No, he's saying you don't put it in.
Well, no, the way you read it to me, the response was that...
You don't.
The question was, do we need to, and they said, no, you don't have to.
No, he said you don't put it in.
Can you just read it back? Because I, I can't imagine that putting the amount in somehow makes it illegal, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
What?
Well, today's the last day to get it in before the ninety days.
Right, but just read back what...
Does this question need to include the amount of the bond issue? Per the statute and state guidance, no. Now, I've emailed Mr...
It doesn't need to, I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative, it's just that, they didn't say we have to. It says, does it need to, and they said, no, it doesn't need it, but residents are going to be very upset if they don't know the amount of money that...
Well, I agree, we have, you have to educate the public on what they're voting on. Whether or not that has to be included in the body of the ballot question is the, is the question. So there should be full disclosure on what this costs for everybody, they know what they're voting on, and everything else. I just don't know the construct of that in terms of the ballot question.
So how about, how about this, actually, this might work. If I were to form a motion that stated, we, um, you know, the motion Ian made stands unless town councils informs us, for whatever reason, that it has to be in the form as drafted, and then we refer to that if it's for some reason, uh, impermissible or illegal.
Well, of course, the problem with that is tonight's last night to vote, so we wouldn't be able to...
No, we do both, because it just, it does it by, I don't have...
So we can approve it, we can approve what I said, subject to town council approval.
Take a recess for five, I'll call Aikman.
Yeah, okay.
Can I make an answer?
I mean, maybe we, we approve it this way, then there's an, can we give an explanatory box? With ballot questions, I know with the state ballot question...
You don't put the number in the question is because you don't know how much it's going to cost you. You know how much you're going to borrow, but you don't know how much you're going to pay, because of the interest rate fluctuations and so forth and so on, so you don't, so whatever you put in that ballot question is the maximum you can pay. So you don't put it in there.
That does make sense.
It does make sense, do you? Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, because, um, we've had questions like that, even with the school, we've put in a higher amount, and if need be, you can go back to town meeting for another appropriation.
Well, we're not, you're, you're asking for a debt exclusion, not an appropriation.
Right.
Now, I agree, somehow, as part of this information, whether you do a explanatory sentence, or whatever else it is, you've got to inform these people they're borrowing eleven and a half million dollars, and based upon current interest rates, this is what it's going to do, we have that information already, okay? But the ballot question itself needs to be what we presented this evening.
So we just need, we just need a motion to approve as written, without the dollar.
Yeah, because at the bottom, the highlighted part does say, questions are often raised as to why the ballot question does not provide for inclusion of a dollar amount, while a definitive answer cannot be provided. One likely reason is that the amount required to repay a borrowing will be dependent on various factors, including the interest rate, length of the borrowing, and where the bond premiums will be applied to reduce the total project costs.
Makes sense.
Yeah, but I still don't, I mean, I'm fine with it, we're, we're going to go with it, but I still don't understand, even reading the likely reason, why you can't put a ceiling, you know? In no event...
If interest rates doubled...
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, because I mean, in no event can it exceed the eleven-five.
Well, we've had, we've had warrant articles like that not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
But this isn't a warrant article.
No, I know.
An interest could, could exceed that eleven point five million, I mean, it's going to.
Right, and it says whether bond premiums will be applied to reduce the total project cost, so it's saying it could be less, and that's why...
Right.
Okay, so Ian, what was your motion?
So I, I just make a motion to approve as written. Right?
Is there a second?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
We need to retract our...
As I say, do we have to undo the previous one?
Did we vote for it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I retract my previous motion, and then to be replaced by...
Motion to rescind your first motion.
Motion to rescind my first motion, yes.
It would be good in the future to get a more detailed explanation, though, because it says a definitive answer cannot be provided.
Right.
Because the statute cited, that's why, so this is their best...
Shot.
Shot at it, but...
Okay, so you made a motion to rescind his first motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, Jeff?
What are we doing? I'm sorry, I'm lost now. Interim town administrator?
Yes.
Who do you want?
No, we're still on your report.
Oh, I'm done.
Yeah, you're good.
No, you're not done.
Why?
ARPA, and that was it.
We did ARPA. What else?
I had a, I had a question on your report, so...
Okay.
Do you want me to hit you with it, or you want to...
You did mention the opioid settlement.
Oh, yeah, the opioid, we filed the necessary paperwork to prove to be part of the settlements, the Janson, Johnson and Johnson, and the distributors. Uh, that does not include anything that has to do with the Sackler family, or some of the other producers of the, of the doc, of the opioids, just those three, where a majority of the states have come to an agreement with the Johnson and Johnson, which is Janson, or Janson, which is Johnson and Johnson, and the distributors.
Okay, then, the right of first refusal?
Uh, that was for information purposes, we got it the other day. Um, it's been distributed to the department heads in the different committees for comment and potential action.
Okay, we'll make a decision when we get comments back.
And you had a question?
Yes. The Noble Travel Center, Jeff, um, I, I read, and it says, uh, that it seems a bit lopsided, given the size of other facilities, and the cost leaves the future of the Noble Travel Center very much in doubt.
Yes.
And, and I reviewed it, and I agree, and I just didn't know if there was something we could do as a board, write a letter in support of this project to DOT, because it seems to me that the guy is kind of getting the short end of the stick, and for Sturbridge, that's a, I saw that property, and it, this would clean it up, I think we would all agree that we want a business there.
Sounded great.
Right down the road in Charleston, they approve those projects, and it seems like this is kind of leaving us on that.
So right now, uh, DOT is going to put a meeting together, which includes his consultant, Mr. Frisbee, and, and they're going to go work with the DOT to understand why the numbers were split that way they were. So I think get through that meeting, and then come back here to see if there's something the board can do. We've also discussed this with, um, the attorney working with us on the two warehouse projects, uh, and we're going to see what he can do.
Okay.
So...
So it'll come back to us?
It'll come back.
Okay.
Okay, did you want to, uh, address the OPEB?
Oh, that was for information purposes, as you roll into the budget season, we did what's called an OPEB valuation, which tells the community, um, what our full liability is for mostly retirement medical benefits for employees, active and retired, and what we have in asset value, which is, you know, how much we've put aside, and you can see those two numbers. The good news is, you're actually doing something about it, you're putting money aside, and as you look in this year's budget, uh, and as you prepare for it, you know, you've made comments about the amount of free cash you have, put more in. With COVID, we kind of restricted some of these things, we did continue to contribute, but not to the extent we may have in the past, you may want to ramp that back up, um, because you have a tremendous liability, as any community does in the nation, you are not unique in any sense of the word, uh, but to ramp up those contributions, and do it systematically over time.
Okay, thank you. Any question on that, or?
No.
Okay, old business? Continue, do you have old business?
I have none.
Chase?
Uh, just, old business, wishing Jeff all the best of luck here, you know, I know your last day's tomorrow, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Why does old business make you think...
I don't know.
Because you're, you're old business.
I don't know.
It's old business.
I don't know about that, Jeff, I don't know.
Jamie, any old?
No, thanks.
The only thing I have is a reminder about the MMA in Boston meeting, that you've gotten emails, is anybody intending on going?
What was the date, what was the date for that?
Okay, this year you have to register online, so...
Are you calling yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
And it was difficult to get the, get through to them, my user number, they had to keep changing, but it's the only way they're doing it this year. Jeff, you going?
I doubt it. I'll have to discuss that with...
Spencer.
Some, yeah, others. I may go for a day, depends on what's going on.
And the weather.
And the weather. It's all good information, I would encourage anyone to go that can.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's a good session.
Okay, next, new business. Why don't we do B before A, seeing as I move things around anyways? Okay, number one is selection of a Board of Selectman representative to the permanent town administrator's position. I'd like to nominate Chase for that position.
I'll second your nomination, sorry.
It's okay.
Are we picking all the nominations, or are we going to vote? I mean, I'm fine with it.
That's what I thought we were...
I, I, before I got that letter, I was going to nominate, um, Jamie.
No, it's fine.
You're happy with that? I'm happy with either one, so...
Yeah, it works for you.
You're, you're good with that?
Yep.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, there was, uh, second?
I think Ian seconded it.
Yep.
Yeah, I made a motion.
You've been on the board a long time, so that's good.
All in favor? Okay, next, we need a department head, and we had three department heads apply, so what's the board's feeling?
I'm going to make a nomination.
Sure?
Did you pick it interim?
No.
No, we skipped over that, that is...
You skipped that again.
Mary's just going freestyle tonight, your last meeting, she's just...
You didn't hear me.
The next meeting, I think what you do is you put it on a hat and hold it the time.
No, I'm just, I'm just getting it, so it's only the second twist to...
All right, here we go.
She's got this on shuffle.
I will make a nomination, and then I will explain why, um, I mean, they're all good choices, so I, I, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but I'm going to, um, nominate Barbara, um, for a few reasons, um, I mean, I think Chief Dessert would do a great job, but we did have the Chief Ford, um, on the search committee the last time, we had someone from Public Safety, so, um, that's my reason primarily for, you know, not choosing either Chief Crass or Chief Dessert, um, Chief Ford we gave the honor to, and Barbara has been an employee for a very long time, she works very closely with the town administrator, particularly during the budget season, she has a lot of people working under her, and I, she has not been a department head choice, um, for a while, I know last time it was Chief Ford and myself, um, so, Jeff, and before that, it was Jeanne Boubon, when Leon Gomond was the one, so I think it's Barbara's turn.
I'll, I'll second that motion for the reason stated, because, not because I think you two are troublemakers or anything, but, uh, just because, you know, I, I think the budget is so centered to what the role, central to what the role is, and she'll be working most closely with him on it, so, for the reasons Mary stated, I'd second it.
Okay, also Barbara is on the town council in Palmer, so she has interviewed and hired people for town manager there, so she does have experience.
I had a question more for you, um, do we have to limit it to one department head?
Yes.
Okay, we're, we're charged to that, okay, I'm just making sure, yeah?
Yeah, no, I mean, that would be good.
Because it'd be great to have some Public Safety people and some, you know, everybody involved.
But what we have done is suggested... But what we have done is suggested for department heads and others interested, you know, to submit the kind of questions that they would like to ask, so Chief Dessert and Chief...
They've even had residents, when I was on a public meeting where residents could come in and department heads could take a little time off and come in and...
So if you had questions, I mean, Chase, we could direct them, you know, that Chase asks, and the same with the two chiefs.
All we need now is three citizens. We have one application so far, but...
Did we put a deadline? I didn't go online for it.
Did we?
No.
No, I don't think so.
Soon as possible.
Yeah.
Because I'm surprised, last time we had more than, we had several.
But this time, there was a little glitch, so it hasn't been up as long as we thought, so, and with the holidays. It's tough. Okay, so we have a motion, second, all in favor? Okay. Now to the interim town administrator. Okay, thoughts from the board?
I personally think Mr. Reed was probably the safest pick. I think they all seemed great. I don't think he really was a bad person in the lot, but that just, he seems to have taken on the role of interim town administrator in a lot of different places, and it doesn't seem like any dramatic sense.
I have the same feeling, just from an experience standpoint. He's done it with seven different towns. He's been the, so I think...
Well, Jamie's more generous with his words than I am. I also thought Mr. Reed was the top choice because of his experience as town administrator, and particularly because of his experience as an interim. He knows what it takes to move on. Some of these others, one was from Vermont, the only experience was Vermont in two little towns. One has experience in Rhode Island. One had experience in Maryland, but most of that was with conservation and that very little experience as far as town manager or town administrator. And the only experience in Massachusetts was about nine months, which I don't really feel is enough for this particular town. We have a lot going on, and we need someone that knows how to work and how to get things done. Mary?
I don't, I think Mr. Reed is a fabulous choice. I had already said that I also personally feel that Ted is a very good choice. He's had the same amount of experience as a town manager between Hawkeston and Oak Ridge. And I thought he did a good job. If Mr. Reed had already been our interim, I would have selected him. Because I always feel like if you got things done, he would have been my first choice, but I think Mr. Reed is very, very qualified as well. You know, again, I'm going to go with everybody. I thought those were the top two. I thought Ted settled three contracts. I thought he did a very good job, so I would have gone first with him. And again, if Mr. Reed had done it, I would have gone first with him. I thought they were very, very equal in terms of their experience as a town administrator, very, very equal. But since the board seems to unanimously, well, I don't know about Chase, feel that Mr. Reed's the better choice, and I'm also okay with him. I'm happy with him. And I would encourage the other candidates. I still thought, even though the gentleman from Vermont had smaller, smaller towns, I would encourage those, I think, I believe there were two applicants that are interested in the permanent job, and I would encourage them to apply for the permanent job if they're interested. If one of them was glowing, obviously then, you know, it's great, it's like a trial run to put a town administrator in temporarily. But the other, I agree, I mean, the other two have had a lot more experience as town managers, and we do want to kind of, we have a lot going on, the senior sent in the ballot question, the election, but I thought the other candidates were very good. And the former mayor is very bright, you know, very qualified, but I don't think his heart is in to be a town manager. You know, he made it pretty clear that he's there to help us, but that's not his dream job. He doesn't have an interest in being a town manager, so...
Right, and I also eliminated a couple because of their response that if they, they will apply for the permanent. And I don't think it would be fair to the town if we appointed an interim, and that interim also applied for the full-time. Because to get somebody to apply, people are going to look and say, oh, there's already an interim, that person's probably going to get it, why should I apply? So I think it would be shrinking the pool of the candidates that would apply.
I like that about Mr. Reed, that he is not interested in working the full-time job at all, and that, you know, he's going to help us out in the interim and then move on.
Somebody want to make a motion then?
Yeah, I will move to approve, what's his first name?
Robert.
Robert Reeds. He's interim town manager, subject to negotiation of a premium.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Questions? All in favor? Okay, there is a copy of the last employment agreement we did have with the interims. Have any of you had time to look it over?
I think we had to talk with him about the day of the weeks, though, right?
Yes.
He had wanted three, and I think you questioned whether he might be willing to go four.
Right, he said, talk about it. There's also...
There's no need to have him on a Friday.
No, and there's also looking at it another way. You can decide hours and however he spreads them out. So that would be part of discussion.
It seemed like he was more agreeable to three longer days and getting a lot done on those days and then, you know, being available for emergencies or whatever the other days.
Right, I mean, with modern technology, it's just...
And that's, a lot changed just in the last couple of years.
Because a lot of interims do three days or 25, 30 hours.
Yeah.
Seeing as it's not full-time. So, next step, I'll have to call Mr. Reed tomorrow, right?
Yep, you can, I can. Depends on what you want to do. It's up to you. I don't, none of the candidates have seen the draft agreement, so... You want to call Mr. Reed, go ahead.
Well, I don't, I come in.
I'll be here until seven.
Okay.
Not a minute longer.
We've used that for several now. Yes, I mean, it's pretty straightforward and pretty...
Right, I mean, it came from council, so it's not long and evolved, so I will call him, speak to him, see if he's amenable. Hopefully. Now, seeing as Jeff leaves tomorrow at 4:01.
Seven, we're here till...
Oh, Tuesday, that's what I always forget, Tuesday. 7:01. And until the interim comes on board, we need an interim interim, just like we always have an interim when Jeff's out of town.
And acting.
Acting.
Did we get any volunteers from the department head?
Yes, Jeff spoke to them.
Jean.
Okay.
Jean will do it.
Okay, we don't even have to vote on that because it's actually Jeff's call on that one. Okay. All those notes I wrote.
Okay.
Okay, correspondence. We're just going to have it.
Yeah, I get a phone.
We do have that thank you letter from Mr. Durfee.
Why am I missing my correspondence?
There isn't any.
There isn't any?
There isn't.
All right.
Okay, so we have approval of minutes from December 6th. Any additions? Corrections?
You really put me, you twisted me all up. I had no idea where I... Didn't have any. No, no.
Okay.
I saw one.
So a motion to approve is written.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Mary was asked...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not in favor. I'm going to let you stay.
That's okay, I do that all the time. Okay, citizens for... Excuse me, Mr. Max, you are not a citizen of Sturbridge.
We have issued, we have a business with the town.
But you're not a citizen of Sturbridge.
We represent citizens in the town. So once again, Mary, you're going to shut, you're going to shut me down from talking?
Mr. Max, we will talk to you if you go about it the right way. If this is about a grievance, if it's gone to Jeff and he's denied it, send us a letter, which we have not gotten, okay? So is there a motion to adjourn?
I have something to say.
You're not a citizen of the town either.
We will request the board not to allow the town administrator to make any actions tomorrow.
Excuse me.
So I can't say that?
No.
So I won't say that?
You won't say anything?
Hasn't been...
Is there a motion to adjourn?
You didn't follow through. We had a handshake agreement and you reneged on it.
I'll make a...
Don't rule it easy.
Michelle? Jeff made a...[1771.11]